The goal is to get input from council on proposed changes. And some of it is very abstract and I need direction from council and I'll draft my which according to the direction given. The proposed rules that we have for you today were mostly came from discussions with the deputy mayor and then staff has been making notes as we have gone past the couple, last couple of years about things that we would like to see changed. I'm not going to brief truly housekeeping issues today. There's a lot of formatting issues and stuff like that in the rules that we will address when the red line comes out at a future council meeting. So, the first topic is time. When to start, when to end the meeting? So, we have been starting at seven and hypothetically ending at 10:00. And I don't think we've ended at 10:00 very consistently. We routinely make motions to extend the meeting past the 10 o'clock hour. So, the deputy mayor wanted to have a discussion on if council wants to take any action to fix that. She also expressed a desire that if we are going to routinely go past the hour of 10 o'clock that we have some sort of break or at least council members be informed on how to take a break if you need one. So, I've not really ever briefed council but there is a motion, it's a privileged motion to recess that any council member can make anytime they have the floor. And by simple majority, council can vote to take a bathroom break anytime they need. But if you want a formal time where everyone understands that we're going to take a break, that also could be possible. So, pretty open-ended discussion and a facilitator can lead you through that.
So, do you want to?
Sure.
I could really want to add a few words.
So, we start our general council meetings, our regular council meetings at seven and oftentimes we'll have a special meeting at five, 5:30 or six. But some of us have been talking about starting our regular council meetings at six or 6:30. The school board several years ago changed their starting time from seven to six and it did not impact the amount of folks that came. In fact, I think it's helped with people who wanted to come and speak to them because instead of going home and getting comfortable, they're not coming back out again, they're coming to their meetings and being involved in their meetings. And I know that if we were to change the time, it would impact our special meetings. So, there is a discussion that needs to be had. And I've talked with this, to Jim about this several times, so.
And the downside to changing, moving it to six is that then that would mean another night of the week perhaps, or in the off week between council meetings that we would have another meeting. So, there's always a benefit to, you know, getting all your business done, getting it done in the pre-meeting and the council meeting done all in, you know, that one Tuesday. The downside obviously, like I said, would be either to go, you know, the next Tuesday or another week or another night of the week. So, it would essentially add a meeting night for us potentially if we were to start our council meetings at six.
So, now you're adding every other Tuesday that you have a council meeting, right?
Right.
Well, and then the Tuesdays that we don't have a council meeting, we have council committee meetings.
Okay.
Some of these are just, I just want to let you know and if I hear dissent, I'll note that, but I think a lot of it is pretty straightforward. Rule 2.2, we're going to alter to reflect the new practice of having the council committee or regional committee reports happen after the proclamation and presentations section of the agenda. And then we'll also modify rule 20.4 to delete the statement that we're going to have written summaries in lieu of verbal reports from council on committees. And then we'll also add a deputy mayor report after the council regional committee reports. This is just codifying term practice. So.
It doesn't happen after the mayor's report though.
The mayor's report is part of proclamations and presentations.
So, this is to reflect current practice?
Yeah, so, I don't think any kind of thing on that one.
Okay. So, it doesn't, so the leader of the committee chair doesn't rotate with every agenda meeting?
No, it's a very odd.
It's a year thing, okay.
And the committee chair itself doesn't have to take it, like I don't do that.
Okay. So, you let it go to the next person.
Okay, Carlos, calm down.
So, so the, so agenda meetings, so the proposal is to continue to have a committee chair there. Is the proposal to have an additional committee chair to rotate them more frequently or what?
No, not add any more people to it. But I would like council to think about it because this is probably the first time you heard about it for some of you.
All right.
And I suspect this will be a more involved conversation, so maybe we could come back to this.
Yes.
Okay. And maybe with some more specifics about what the proposal should be.
Actually, the proposal is very straightforward. It is to rotate by position instead of by committee.
Okay. Oh, I see. So, he doesn't have a committee chair.
Right.
So, there's the, there's the tug, okay.
The next point is, I think, straightforward. We want to update the definition of, for 11.1, of what an immediate family member is for used absences, if there's a death in families, stuff like that, just to reflect a more modern definition that includes domestic partners. So, the next proposal is from the deputy mayor. This is to modify rule 11.4 to allow more than two council members to participate in a meeting remotely. There's still another rule that basically asks council members to only do this sparingly, that they should endeavor to attend council members physically. But there are cases when council members are all at the same conference or the same training and they don't want to limit who can go to the training based on how many people can be absent from the meeting. So, I've talked to IT, we can facilitate this from a technological standpoint, so if the council wants to change the rule, we can. The other part of this is allow participation executive session remotely if a council member declares affirmatively that there's no one else present in the room because we can't have third parties in the room for attorney's rights.
You know, I would suggest though that somewhere in the rules, there would be a requirement that for, that for those present, there should be a quorum present because you certainly don't want to have a situation in which you've got, you know, three or less people on the dais. That's a, I think you probably want to codify that.
The main issues with social media are scope of your comments, who you're representing with your comments, making it very clear that council members speaking for themselves as individuals and not for the council or the city, and how to express that to the public. And then there's a PRA issue, which I think to see is we've purchased software to solve that largely, but we currently don't have anything on the books that requires council members to archive. So, we might have a rule where councils decided to self-impose a rule that they have to use the archiver. And then the last is some, I guess prophylactic measures to try to not violate the OPMA. So, specifically, we want to modify 14.1, which is the scope of representation section to clearly state that these three things, that communication is the view of the individual, not of the city council or the city of federal way, that people are to be professional in their communications. That kind of goes without saying, but it's nice to write it down sometimes to remind ourselves. And then some disclaimers, which I will, but we have a link or actually the disclaimer is spelled out somewhere on your page so that people know why you're behaving the way you are, why some people comment, some people don't, and the consequences of commenting on your comment because it is a public record. We would like a statement that it makes it a little bit more easier if council members choose to block down comments on the things they post. That's a personal choice, but it's much more difficult to track OPMA stuff if you allow comments. So, that is something that's in the current policy and I liked, so I propose that. And then the last is a PRA component and that is council members will be required to post either social platforms that are supported by our social media archiver program, which supports quite a number of major platforms. You need to enroll in that. Several council members have taken advantage of that in the past. Or if you want some novel weird thing that I'm unaware of, I think the big one, it's not that weird, but I don't think Nextdoor is supported. If you're going to post on there, you would need to take a screenshot of your post and get it to the city. So, those are the proposed rules. And this is just a caveat to, you know, council cover that it's okay to use government computers to make social posts because it's a national use, which is the current policy anyway. We just want to write it down.
We get things over emails and you don't know sometimes if everybody has been contacted. If I know everybody's been contacted, then I don't do anything. But if somebody insists, sends something to me and they blind call me.
Right.
I don't want to ignore it and then have them say, well, you didn't answer my email.
But you can respond directly to that person. You just don't include the rest of the council in your response.
Well, I said the rest of the council, I wouldn't.
So, sometimes instead of emailing the council as a group or a whole, people will send an email to each of you individually. And in that case, you really have no way of knowing. Right? And so, I would just say, just respond to that person and that's okay.
Once again, the rule is to control council members talking to council members. It's not between you and a citizen. So, as long as you hit reply and that reply all, you're fine.
Code of ethics, they never done that.
So, I've got two proposed modifications to the ethics code. The first is currently our code has a definition of things that aren't a gift to be things of minimal value. And a lot of people have asked me many, many times, what does that mean? And most places have a dollar amount to describe what minimum is. So, we wanted to have a council discussion on that point. The feds use $20 and no more than 50 per year from the same source. The state uses $50. I just, whatever council wants to put in that, I can insert, I don't think we should exceed $50. I mean, that's the outer limit of what's reasonable. But like I said, the feds use 20. I also wanted to add something that's in the state exemption, which basically says that if you're, it's that long paragraph at the end that allows for payment for conferences and travel and things like that for things related to your official duties. So, that right now, sometimes it's not clear that council members can use, can take funding sources from outside agencies to attend training. And that's, everyone agrees that's ethical behavior, but it's not actually in our code. Recently, there was some confusion and a lot of it was caused by how our rule is phrased for how to address remote interests. Remote interests, just to refresh everyone's memory, are those, not a direct financial gain to a council member or employee, but some organization that you're a significant member of, say a board member or something like that, is benefited by an action taken by the city. That's what's called remote interest under state law and our code. So, our ethics code on, talks about remote interests and how to address them, it's derived from RCW 4223040, but it's not the exact language from the state statute. It's kind of paraphrased. And in that attempt to, I think, clarify, they made it a little unclear on the last point, that is, even if you have, any of the interest is remote, you are not to advocate to take a particular course of action as related to your remote interest. So, the question is, we just want to make it very clear in the rule, very crystal clear that if you are requiem yourself because you have remote interests, what that means. And that means no debate, no advocacy, and no vote.
Or the poor and infirm, in which case you can, but you have to be able to show that nexus.
Correct. So, this is all very fact-specific and not really on point for the rule changes that I want to make. So, if anyone has questions, I'm happy to talk to them about it directly. But as far as the business before us, I think we're going to add a diminut, a value for diminut, and then we're going to modify the remote interest rule to reflect state law. Okay.
So, you guys, we're going to go three minutes just like at the regular council meetings and Stephanie's going to keep track using her cellphone. And so, everybody knows the, knows the rules. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. And, all right, our first is Margaret Nelson.
I believe the council mayor need to do a detailed review of the city's comprehensive plan, which sets forth broad guidelines and policies for future development of the community, which includes such topics as city vision, zoning, land capacity, comprehensive housing, affordability strategy, concurrency, impact fees, et cetera. Maybe this can be done in study sessions by chapter with action to make updates and changes as required. We're with Sound Transit and all the development we're having, I think it's good that all of you understand what's in that comprehensive plan. Sometimes I feel that you don't and you're not following it and I'd like everybody to be on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. All right, Margaret.
Thank you. My name is Margaret Nelson, I'm resident of Federal Way. First, I wanted to start with a commercial. I love the community center, I love parks, I like my place. General things are doing pretty well. Thank you very much for all of the stuff. I went to the newspaper open house on Thursday and I picked up newspapers from other communities. And I would suggest that everybody should do this because here's what I saw. In the Kent paper, I saw that Sound Transit is messing around with the location of Lowe's and Dick's Drive and terrible. Terrible. In the Auburn reporter, I saw that a 90-room hotel is coming to downtown. Makes me think they poached our idea of having a downtown hotel. And in the Federal Way paper, I saw that Microsoft is going to invest $500 million for its regional housing. I'd like to make these comments. I'd like to say that we need to have plans for development of downtown now so that we have a prosperous high to middle income setup down there. And this study needs to be done now before Sound Transit comes and decides what they're going to do. I suggest that you have an economic plan to attract job-creating businesses here because I'm familiar with some people that are working with recovering drug addicts. What they're doing first is they're giving them a situation where they can get a job. Maybe it's a menial job, but it's a job. It's very important to your psyche to have some reason to do things. And I'd say that we need to have job-creating businesses here. We need to fill up the warehouser void. And the third thing is this, I was very upset to read that in the money from Microsoft, that about half of that was going to go to middle-income housing in Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Issaquah, Renton and some Mamish. And another, the other half will go to low-income housing across federal, across King County. That's us. We need to have middle and upper-class jobs and middle and upper-class, I'll say the word, subsidized housing. I know people that recently could not buy a house in Federal Way. They had to go down into unincorporated Pierce County because they couldn't afford it. So, I really wish that you would help me find out what your plan is regarding the plans for downtown and Sound Transit and what your plans are for an economic plan to attract job-creating businesses. And what your plan is to make sure that Sound Transit, this is my scenario that I see. Sound Transit will provide land for low-income housing. And we're going to be stuck with a downtown that's all low-income housing and we don't deserve that. Everybody deserves to have a nice downtown. And I hope that you all will give me a plan that I can see, because I don't see it right now, before this, thank you very much. And then do world peace, because I know it's just.
Well, thank you, Margaret. And actually, later in the agenda, Margaret, we're going to be having Tim Johnson talk about all the things that we're working on with economic development. And we are working on economic development as it relates to and planning for as it relates to Sound Transit coming through. So, hope you can make the rest of the retreat.
Thank you. And I hope that it will then end up on the front page of these papers.
Right. All right, thank you.
Margaret, I wanted to thank you for your comments as well. Actually, deputy mayor and I exchanged emails regarding these very subjects and we are going to have a future meeting to address those. There just wasn't enough, not enough time in the day-to-day to get to those and achieve the other goals that we have. But it's, it is top, is top of the list and front and center for us. Thank you.
Margaret, this is me and I have been talking about that for the last three years. And I did it with eyes bringing up to, thank you.
Oh, I think we can add more and more of that. Let me coach Mark.
Well, thank you very much. I said this before, but what I'd really like to see is that the chamber and the city work together to have another retreat, which we've done in the past, quite a while ago, where you all get together in a group and talk about what it is that's preventing our corporations from cycling here. What is it? Is it that we have a problem with streamlining our permits? I know that you're going to talk about economic development later on, but I think that part of the problem may be not so much with the state code, but our code, our regulations in the city. Is it because the fees are too high? What is it that's keeping our developers from being able to develop here? We're getting an abundance of low-income housing, but we don't have the jobs. We have people sitting on the bus, driving two hours a day, one way, four hours a day to get back from work. We should have our jobs right here, but not just mom and pop. We need to have jobs that will pay a living wage. And so, we've, we've needed to look at that for a very, very long time. And so, maybe we need to start with our zoning, our planning and our regulations. And just simply talk about your own code. What is it that's preventing our developers from developing? They should feel free to be able to tell you without recrimination, without fear of retaliation, what's wrong. And so, really, really need to have that. And secondly, I really think that we should be joining in with the East Side, the Auburn, to do an East Side regional look at the homeless problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go one more. Nick Wilson.
I'm here to thank you for the investment on the construction from Park Highway on, next to the Skidmore Ring down to 356. That was a nice addition. I know a lot of the public really appreciates that, too, the metro system. So, I think that, so, here goes our budget, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, I know it's been said before, but listening to the city attorney and looking at all the slides and looking at all the RCWs, I would like to propose that the city put in an ordinance that all meetings, no matter what they are, be open to the public. I know I've stated before about the homeless task force, which was closed. And in my, that feeling, I really don't feel that that served the public very well. And so, I'm proposing that in the future and in the near future, so they put it in writing and making a declaration that all meetings, no matter what, are open. We have a lot of commission meetings and they are open to the public. We invite the public in. City council meetings, they are open to the public. We invite the public in. No meeting should be blocked off. No meeting should be, should withhold the public because public input is so important for this city. And so, without that, you are just shutting off. You're just saying, no, we don't want to be. And so, we want to be heard. So, I'm making a declaration and I would like it to be in operation. I would like it, you know, however you format it, but as you're going over the, during this retreat, as you're going over the full disclosure of different things, as you're bringing things out in the open, I would like to propose that all meetings be open to the public regardless of what they are. And I would like to see that in writing. So, that's all I.
All right, thank you, babe. Sue Peterson.
Thank you. First of all, before I begin my rant, I want to commend Yarden Widenfeld for all of his work on the airplane issue. He goes to everything and he speaks at everything, advocating for us here in Federal Way. And the other communities believe that he advocates for them too. So, I am.
Isn't he great?
And not just because he's sitting here, but because it's the truth.
Yeah.
Secondly, I am so discouraged. I feel like the citizens are not being heard. We are sick and tired of the crime. We are sick and tired of the homelessness. I, I don't even, I can't come to all of the city council meetings any longer, but I see tons and tons of comments on Facebook, on the neighborhood blogs, the Nextdoor neighbor blogs, about how we're not being listened to, we're not, you may be listening, but there's no action. We need to stop this crime. I was accosted over at Joann's Fabrics, going in to get a piece of cloth, by about five younger men who wanted money. What, I'm little, I'm old. What chance do I have if they became violent toward me of, you know, surviving or not being brutalized? I saw some woman down at the Walmart, an older woman was just walking into this store. Is this not correct? And was accosted by a thug, a younger guy? It was in the mirror today. I mean, how much, I don't feel safe. I have lived in Federal Way for 26 years. Intermittently, I've lived in New York City, San Francisco and Portland due to my husband's work. I felt safer walking the streets of New York City than I do walking the streets of Federal Way. Now, there's a problem there when you can't feel that you can walk into a Joann's or a grocery store. I don't even want to go near a grocery store in Federal Way. There is so much shoplifting going on and who knows when they're going to turn on you. We need something that's going to solve this problem. I don't know what it is either, but we need you to hear us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. We hear you. Tim Burns.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council, I've been trying to pay attention to all your excellent work on the budget. And I've had a question for you, and that is, how much revenue does the city stand to lose if the cards have bill passes? I think the citizens have a right to know that.
Thank you, Tim. Is that it?
Alternatively, do you have a Plan B for your budget in case that happens?
Thank you very much, Tim. And I would note that our, what we were anticipating in regard to projected revenue is just shy of a million dollars. I believe it was $985,000 per year that we would, that would be the revenue stream from a transportation benefit district, TBD. So, that is just about a million dollars per year. Now, while that was not included in this next two-year budget, it is certainly something that we're going to be talking about, that a day is going to be talking about, is one of the possibilities for revenue futures. So, and actually, you'll have the answer to your question in just a moment, but off the top of my head, that's what, that's what I recall. Okay, thank you very much. And I think actually you bring up a really good question of what are the practical implications, and this is something that the council may want to weigh in on by way of whether we take take issue with an initiative if it gets on the ballot, about $30 car tab fees. And we'd have to have a public process for that and allow pro and con statements before the council would ever take a position on an initiative. But I can tell you as a, as a Sound Cities Board, as a Sound Cities Association board member, I have advocated that the Sound Cities step up and be heard on that particular issue because for cities, it could have a serious impact. So, thank you very much. Catherine Festa.
Was that what he was talking about? Was he talking about Tim?
Thank you. I'm here to, can you hear me? Okay. The veterans and seniors, the human service lobby, just opened up their inflammation plan and it starts from 2019 to 2023. There are millions of dollars out there in requests for proposals that are just waiting for people to apply for. A lot of the money goes for vets that are homeless and I think that the city of Federal Way needs to look at additional resources by looking at these requests for proposals and applying for some of them. They aren't just housing. There's a lot of other great programs out there that anybody could apply for. And I think. And I think that we need additional resources.
Great. All right, Lamont Stiles. And then I don't have any more pink sheets. If anybody would like to speak, please fill out a pink sheet. Oh, you've got two? Oh, the letter. Thank you.
He's impressed with everyone. My comment was, I had the opportunity, I go to Black Collective in Tacoma, and it kind of like spawned a little bit of... It was interesting, because they had a councilman that was there that was giving them a report. I'm sorry. That was giving them a report. And it was very interesting, their outtake on... oh, yeah, Lily and Hunter. And she just gave a rundown of their agenda and their way of attacking a lot of the issues that we're talking about today, homelessness. When we talk about homelessness, I won't say it coincides with crime, but a portion of it does, drug addiction, things of this nature. And Western State, they decided, I guess, on the state level, I think they're going to dissolve Western State, Eastern State. They're going to make pockets, or more pockets, of... for mental illnesses. When I walk the streets of Federal Way, it disturbs me that I can walk and I can see somebody just talking to themselves. You can see that they're homeless. You just see, and it's like, man, that's a mental... Who walks down the street? I used to be on a shop on Pack Highway, and there was a guy, and he would just walk down the street, and he would just curse like loud. And I just... I look out, and I'm like, what's going on? This is a mental illness. I'm not an expert on this. But to me, it seems like something should be done. This person shouldn't just be walking the streets. Me and my son were at Sahali, and a guy is throwing rocks at us and calling us out of our name. And it took at least forever to get there. They didn't show up when I got there, and it was like an hour. Some of the things that... or, I'm sorry, citizens were saying. I live in the Twin Lakes area. I've watched the management at Safeway wrestle with somebody over a bag that he was stealing, or Fred Meyer overwhelmingly. But the point that I'm trying to make was, what we're talking about is issues that have multiple layers to them. And early on, or last year, we weren't attacking the police. What we were saying was, they're not the only solution to this problem, and there are other solutions. And really, I think that the police do a great job of what they do, reacting. They do a great job. They figure out who does the crime, and that's the job. I was listening to a podcast this week, and a case came up, and what they said was a case in DC. And they said that it is not the police's job to protect an individual citizen. That is... I mean, that's a fact. It's not the police's job to protect a particular citizen. And I think we have to look at multiple solutions to these issues to help out with what's going on. And also, I watched the mornings, the mornings of city council. And they stood up to sound frankly. They said, "No." It was mostly behind the burger place that was just built over there. But they said they made an ordinance, and I was like, wow, like that? They made an ordinance, like, no, not around here. So I would like to see, like, our council stand up for us, the citizens of Federal Way, for what is going on in Federal Way, and make decisions that are best for the people of Federal Way. And my last comment would be, small business entrepreneurship. Just recently, the state attacked my industry, which is the hair industry, and they wanted to do away with bootstraps. They got 5,000 members in two days to go up against that. And this is just something that's really dear to my heart, because 80-plus percent of the jobs that are created are created by small businesses. Although I would like to see corporate... I won't even say that. People coming in and investing in the city of Federal Way. I would like to see the city invest in their own people to help build industry within our city. That's my comment.
Thank you, Lamont. Okay, is there any... oh, we've got a letter. Would you please... it's from Bob Kellogg. And we should... it's probably within the three minutes, but we should time it nevertheless. Okay, actually, let's hear from Mr. Stiles, Jim Stiles. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, assembled citizens of Federal Way. I want to kind of tag along on our previous speaker's comments, because I think he's hit a very good point that ties into what seems to be noted as the homeless problem. And that really frustrates me when we talk about human beings, other human beings who may or may not live in the area all the time, some of the time. They're human beings. I mentioned the mental problems that some people have, and that those need to be... their problem is that. Homelessness is a function of problems that some individuals have. But what we're not doing right now, what scares me, is what's been done in other communities. And I'll bring up Seattle, because they've been an abject failure at trying to deal with the individual problems of those people who are without home, who have to be without homes and have other issues as well. That there seems to be a sense of, we need to take responsibility, and I agree, as a community, we need to take responsibility for those who need help, to help them identify what the problems are and deal with those problems. The problem I have that seems to be coming from places like Seattle, not only Seattle, is that there's an attendant requirement on the part of people who choose to live in this community that they be held responsible, just as the rest of us are. I don't have the right to go to somebody else's house and decide, "I really like that stuff on your porch better than you do, so I'm going to take it." I don't have the right to go up to somebody and say, "You know what? I need your cellphone, so I'm going to take it." And yet, it seems that we have a group that's been created that are held to be irresponsible. That's not fair. They are individual human beings. They have a right to our concern and our care. But we have a right to say that here are the conditions with which you can live in our community. If you don't have enough resources, or you need help in finding a home or other services, our responsibility is to help you. Our responsibility is not to allow you to live as some separate class of people out in the bushes or other places that are not acceptable places to perform bodily functions, to do drugs, and to commit crimes. The problem then that I see is that we need to address this and take individual and collective responsibility for dealing with individuals. Find out what the issues are. Settle. Here's the choices. If you want to live among us, then you have to be able to abide by some of the rules. If you're not able to do that, I don't think that there's anything wrong with it. Somebody refuses help, there's nothing we can do for them. We can't force them. I like to tell people, I'm not with the government. I can't make you do anything. And yet, what I can say is, we have community standards by which we can live together. Without those standards, what we devolve into is just mass hysteria and a non-functioning city, a non-functioning community. And I think we're dangerously close at some points to that. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't help people, but people need to take individual responsibility and accept it or not. If you don't, then they need to try to find some other place where that sort of... like Seattle, where that sort of lifestyle is allowed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, now Bob Kellogg submitted a letter. I've shared it with our city clerk. He asked that it be read.
Says, "Dear Mayor Farrell, because I'll be out of town this Saturday, I will be unable to attend the council retreat. Therefore, I would like this read in two minutes for the city clerk. Our city is at a crossroads moment in time, very much like the one we faced when we became a city in 1990. It took King County's master plan to dump apartment development into South King County to wake the people up that we need to become a city to protect our community from overdevelopment of low-income housing. In approximately four years, we'll have sound transit light rail coming into Federal Way. That means our city will become more urbanized community. Federal Way will need a strong visionary approach from its leadership to deal with this change. There's a story circulating Facebook that Microsoft has offered $500 million for low-income housing to be placed in Kent, Auburn, and Federal Way. The idea being that Bellevue should continue to be a place for middle-income and above housing and commercial development. What housing and commercial development does this mean for us? This is something we should all be concerned about. Years ago, I saw the initial plan for the Uptown Apartments that are located on 11th and 320th across from Safeway. It was supposed to be for middle-class and opportunities for people of lower incomes to live there as well. When it was built, it did not have a swimming pool that was initially indicated, nor does it have elevators in the fourth-story structures that were created. It is not a middle-class development, but it is low-income and is in the core area of our city. Is this the future we want? People who work at Safeway across the street are saying the shoplifting is quite high now that these apartments have been built. City crime statistics shows the robbery is up 38%. Will the shoplifting occur at Safeway be an indicator of what low-income housing will bring relative to lawlessness in Federal Way? Federal Way reputation is on a downward death spiral. It's often referred to people both living here or outside our city as felony offenders. Many are saying this is not Federal Way they remember and loved, and as a result, many I know have left. The point of this letter is this: We live in the Puget Sound region, one of the most beautiful places in our country. We have potential spectacular views all over our city. We need to sell ourselves as the next Bellevue, because we are willing to use our location for middle-class or above personal high-rise living space, and also as high in commercial development. Why is this possible? It's because it's cheaper to build here than in Seattle. This is exactly what the representatives for IRG said when describing the warehouse or property in a TV interview last year. The future of our community is in your hands. Build it up, not down. Bob Kellogg."
All right, thank you. All right, is there any more... any more pink sheets? All right, thank you very much.
To Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Lamont, and Council, before I stop my presentation, I just want to share the recent news with you, which to some degree will highlight the effect of some of the decisions that you've made, and maybe to also focus on some of the decisions that you need to make. This is a new release from Government Finance Officers Association. You can see the date right there. That was issued January 14th. So we got it just a couple of days ago. This is a reward that the city has received for the past 28 years. One of the items that came up as part of the options is marijuana and Transportation Benefit District TBD, sales tax.
Could you say that again? Sorry. Got it on myself.
Probably acts good, loot. Business occupation tax, bill of health. Fleece and apartments and stores, which is really part of a business and occupation tax as well. Today, the first one, which is part of business. According to ACW 6950542GI, the state's share distribution went to exceed $15 million in 2018, and in 2019, about $20 million. In 2020, for 2020 and thereafter. So as of now, that is the way the state is splitting the revenue from marijuana sales. 70% is distributed on a per capita basis. That 70% is further broken down by 60% of the 70 goes to the county, based on the population. And 40% of that 70% goes to the city, based on the population. The balance from that 70... the remainder of the 70% versus the 30% is what is distributed to the individual jurisdiction based on the dollar amount of sale from that jurisdiction. So based on the first 70%, and the third percent, the state is saying, regardless of the revenue we make, the maximum that we go to distribute is $20 million. And that $20 million, 70% of it, will be per capita, based on population. And the third percent of it will be based on the sale from individual jurisdiction. Then, of course, individual city also have sales tax, our regular sales tax. In the city of Federal Way, our sales tax is 0.85%. So whatever the sales that we generate within the city, 0.85% of that is what will come directly to us. So say, for example, a gross sale of $1 million would generate $8,500. A gross sale of $10 million would generate $85,000. So I spent some time with the state, saying, well, based on the dollar amount that the state is doing now, the 70% that they are going to distribute out of the $20 million, if they were able to distribute that by the population and all of that, how much will come to the city of Federal Way? They are estimating, the preliminary number that they are giving me, is that Federal Way will probably give over $100,000 from the state. Now, the other part of that is the sales tax the city of Federal Way would generate, remember the 0.85% that I mentioned earlier. So if we open one store, I think the city has the... can open up to four stores now. And if we're able to make $1 million or $10 million, so there is a potential total revenue that will come from that tax. In addition to those, and again, I'm just providing this information to the council, in addition to the dollar, other factors that the council should consider is maybe the public approval and the prior council decisions. So that is there, and that is for the council to assume. Move over this decision for you to keep in mind. Yes, the revenue from this is now restricted, and no voter approval is required. And we're looking at a total of $185,000 based on this initial study. Transportation Benefit District. TPD revenue might be used for transportation improvement, included in the local regional or state transportation plan. We find most of our transportation project now with utility tax, with rate, with general fund. So what this will do is this will be funded with TBD. We started this about eight years ago. And I have updated this information. I think that Mayor Farrell spoke briefly about that earlier. Based on the information from the state, I think there are more vehicles registered within the city of Federal Way that will affect... that will affect the total revenue from this. TBD may impose a vehicle license fee of up to $50 without a public vote, subject to the following conditions: $15, as proposed in the budget, and the condition given. $20 in required. If we're going to do fully, then the first $20 has to be in effect for two years. If we're going to raise it to 50, then the first $40,000 again must be in effect for 24 months or two years. Anything above $50 and up to $100 must be approved by a single majority of voters. Anything above 50 and up to $100 must be approved by a single majority of the voters. As of December 34, 2018, the state has 68,937 vehicles registered within the city of Federal Way limit that will fall or that will be able to pay this TPD. Based on that information, there is the analysis, and of course, the state will charge 1 percent for administrative fees for whatever it is that we collect. If the city were to levy $15 TPD, that would generate 1,340,000, and of course, the state will get its piece, that is 10,344,000, with a net revenue coming to the city of 1,240,000. Instead of $15, if the council were to levy $20, that amount would go to 1,379,000 and 1,400,000, and the state will get its 1 percent of 13,720,000, with a net revenue of 1,365,380.
The day. The day. Can we just go back to the last slide? I just want to clarify one point. Under B, item I says $15 as proposed in the budget. It was not proposed in this budget cycle. It was proposed in the previous budget cycles, so there's no pending action. This is only discussion. Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure it's clear to everybody.
We couldn't do this.
Also, if the city, if the council were to levy this TPD, the city may also provide a rebate, you know, for the universities that are financially disadvantaged with other conditions. The car is licensed in the city of Federal Way, that means they may not be coming to the city of Federal Way and will have that money to pay a rebate. And the individual meets the income guidelines for the household, that means in terms of the poverty level that has been set. And the individual has actually purchased the new tab and paid the fee for the new tab that the city can provide a rebate on. And the individual can submit the application to get that rebate. So if this council and mayor were to levy this, we're saying we can provide a rebate for whatever amount that the individual has paid, $15 or $20. According to the state, it will take a minimum of six months from the time that the TPD is enacted before the city will receive any money. So whatever, if the city decides to do that, it's not something that will start generating money right away. It'll take six months from the time it's enacted before we can see the forced revenue. This TPD revenue is restricted. Yes, there's no requirement, the voter approval, and it will generate, depending whether it's $15 or $20, it will generate a little bit over $1. The third option is sales tax. Basic sales tax, according to ACW 9214-030-1, the 0.5 percent, which is referred to as a forced half cent. If both the city and the county are levying this forced half, then 14 percent of the forced half must be distributed to the county. City of Federal Way and King County may levy this amount. So that is currently part of the city's sales tax. So this particular portion, that is 0.5 percent times 85 percent, as described in that ACW, that is 0.425 percent. The second layer of the sales tax is the option 0.5 percent sales tax, commonly referred to second half cent. The section two of the same ACW, which is the same rule applied as the first one. So 0.5 percent times 85 percent also give us 0.25 percent. So both of them, in order to 0.25 and 0.25, which are unrestricted, and that will give us a total of 0.85 percent, which is what we have now.
So is it 0.425 or 0.45?
Actually, it should be 0.25, not 0.42. It should be 0.425. So if we add two of 0.425 together, it would give us 0.85. Additional sales and used tax option is 0.9 percent transit sales tax. This one require voter approval. Another one is 0.2 percent TPD sales tax. This TPD sales tax is different from the first TPD that we were talking about. This also require voter approval. 0.1 percent public safety sales tax, of course, also, this also require voter approval. 0.1 percent affordable housing sales tax, it also require voter approval. This particular one, the affordable housing, available to the city only King County has not levied the tax. 0.1 percent arts, science, and culture sales tax, again, this one also is voter approval, intended for seven years only. Medical health and drug dependency, available to the county and cities in those counties. So now it's available to the city in King County. Sales tax charges may take effect no sooner than 75 days after the department of Labor received notice. So even if the city decides to do this, it will not take effect, you know, any sooner than 75 days. In order to run the election and to be able to take effect, the city, it will take effect on January 1st, or April 1st, or July 1st. All of these new sales tax are restricted because we levy them for specific items. In the name of Social Security Health, the general fund, it may help you to expand services, but not the health general fund. The next one is property tax, late-lit. Taxing jurisdiction on the tax rate, that is less than the statutory maximum rate, may ask the voters to levy the amount by increasing the tax rate to some amount, or two, or less than the statutory maximum amount. A single majority vote is required in order to do this. There are different types of levy: single year, late, or one year. That is where you propose to the citizen, you just want to levy this amount, 500,000 or whatever it is, is one time. And the other time is multiple or multi-year late-lit, where, say, 2021, it goes up, you know, by a certain percent or by a certain amount, second year or third year may go up. So basically, you are removing the levy in more than one time. Single year late, year late, that is just one year, which is what we call basic late Multiple, multi-year levy. Everything can be used for pretty much anything, but stay there in the title of the ballot. In order to do the late-lit, again, it has to go to the citizens, and the law says voters describe exactly what it is they were doing and what it would be installed on the ballot. It may not supply an assistance fund. So because it's multiple year, length of time may be bumped off each year, one year, up to six years. That is, the fourth year, you can say you are raising by 500,000. The third year or the second year, you can raise it by another 400,000. That is, you are removing the levy in more than one time. So every of this may be permanent or be limited. If permanent, that means levying the future year after the last bump will be subject to the 1 percent levy that is currently there. If it's now permanent, it will reverse back to the original rate before the date lived to its end. For multiple year late-lit, the late for the fourth year was restated. The increase may not exceed the maximum amount allowed by law.
I want to start with the bond rating by Moody's. You know, there are three key bond raters. There's Moody's, there's Fitch, and there's Standard and Poor's. And I'm taking this, and I'm asking you, I recognize, Mayor, I'd say you've got eight seconds, and I lose you, but I think this is really important. Two weeks ago, Standard and Poor's had a national conference, a webinar, seminar, a conference call. I was on it. And within the context of their analysis of the economy, the future economy, Standard and Poor's identified that there will be a deceleration in 2019 of our economy. This was something that Councilmember Tran, you talked about, is a downtrend in the economy built into our budget. In June of this past year, I wrote a major paper. You don't have it. I went over it with a day at length, and I can get it to you. It's on economy and what a potential deceleration looks like for Federal Way. Now, within the context of that deceleration that Standard and Poor's was talking about, they said that not all cities will be hit by it. My eyes got very big as I was listening to this conversation because of the fact that the analysis that I performed for you, as Day notes, that while the country and parts of the country will feel this deceleration, Federal Way will not. It will be one of many cities in the nation that will not be impacted by deceleration. Let me give you a couple of examples why that won't happen. First of all, voters have already voted for Light Rail, and that capital improvement budget is what? From Get From Angle Lake to Federal Way, it's $3.8 billion, and it is now, EJ, what, $400 million over budget, as identified in a news article in the Seattle Times. And it's not done yet, Dee. We voted the school district bond levy for Mayor, 400, 450 million. Add that up. Come on, let's get the numbers rolling here. And in just a few minutes, I'm going to give you the data on all the construction and development and corresponding jobs of businesses coming here, where we're going to be looking at over a 10-year period. In public investment alone, in a 10-year period of over $6 billion, as of a B, $6 billion in a corresponding private sector investment of almost $8 billion. Got the numbers here for you, but I want to let you know that when I look at something like Moody's, and I look at their ratios, I also look at what Standard and Poor's, and I also look at what Fitch is doing, and I combine all of them. I think we're in a good position. It is strange for me, but I must provide you with this statement. We're tightening our belts, and I understand the reason why we're tightening our belts.
Five.
That's it?
I think that's it.
Okay. Done? Thank you.
Now, please, chief.
All right. Yep. Being back to you and maybe working with you a little bit about how to, and then you come back at another meeting and talk about what is 2018 like.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. District Mayor, Councilmembers. I was asked to share public safety information with you. I will go relatively quick through my material. If you have questions, please ask. The information I'm going to share with you, I hope that it helps you with your future policy decisions, and I believe it'll also help you when you interact with the public or citizens in our community. I hope that you find the information to be informative and interesting. First, I'm going to share with you some of our performance measures as it relates to public safety, and then I'm going to share with you 2018 crime statistics. I'm going to share with you our goals and objectives for 2019 for the police department. And then lastly, what I believe will reduce crime and violence in our community, and I've been sharing this with various service groups and with our citizens, I would also like to share that information with you. We are the fifth-largest city in King County. We're the ninth-largest city in the state of Washington. As of April 1st, 2018, our population, according to Washington Office of Financial Management, were 97,440. So April 1 of this year, we will get our new population nearly nearing 100,000. Federal Way in 2016 was the fourth-fastest-growing city in the state of Washington. Our area in general is one of the fastest-growing areas in the state. We're a full-service law enforcement agency. We have, we're authorized 163 total employees. We have 134 sworn authorized positions, 29 civilian employees, and 25 volunteers within the police department. These volunteers live in our community. I wanted to share with you about our response time. This is really important because as police managers, we constantly monitor our average response time. This is where we get most of our complaints from our residents about response time. Why did it take so long? So from a manager perspective, from a police chief, I'm always looking at average times and what's our emergency response time. And you can see that in 2013, our response time overall, all calls, once the call comes into dispatch, the time the officer arrives at the scene, for every call average, it was 12.89. So some of the things we do is online reporting. We also offer phone reporting, and a lot of agencies don't do that. And I also want to share with you our highest call types. Suspicious person or vehicle by foreign residents call that in the most. And then you've got your welfare check, you've got your theft. We have two K nine dogs now, that's where you see the increase. Negotiation or crisis intervention, communication unit, forty-six deployments in Valley C D U, our civil distribution unit one time to assist the Port of Seattle in their demonstration protests. So I wanted to share with you the number of callouts that our agency has on an annual basis, which are pretty high numbers. But we do, not too many police departments have a bomb disposal unit. We are a regional team, but we do respond into Pierce County from time to time, and we do support South King County agencies when there's a bomb deployment, because we are the only agency that has that certified by the FBI. I know overtime was an important topic. I shared with you that I, we would probably come in about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is a preliminary number from finance. Uh I'm sorry I'm over five thousand dollars, but we came in, we're projected to come in at eight fifty-five. Our allocated budget is seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, so we're about ninety thousand dollars over budget. We did pull back some gun emphasis patrols and so forth. I sense that was an importance to the policy group. But I'm going to tell you that if there's a crime trend, if something happens, you know, we're going to need to spend some overtime. Also, as Mayor mentioned, we have one, you know, homicide manslaughter case in our case. That's really where the savings came from. So Mayor touched upon quite a bit of this, I'll go through it really quickly. Crime is down overall in just about every category. That's really good as a community. Uh it's down eleven percent from ninety-one hundred over all crimes to about eight, just over eight thousand. Again, one homicide, seven the year before. Motor vehicle theft, eight hundred five versus nine sixty, down sixteen percent. Residential burglary is down six percent. Um and the larceny overall is down nineteen percent. So a couple of other things, not every crime was good, but robbery was up from one seventy to two thirty-four. So that is one crime, it's a violent crime, that is our, and the mayor cited some of the reasons. We've been having a lot of cell phone type theft, people come to me, buy cell phones, and they get their cell phones wrong. Or total shots fired. Incidences where a bullet has left a gun, where there's injury or no injury, this includes drive-by shootings. From two thousand and sixteen to seventeen, we saw a ten percent reduction. And seventeen to eighteen, we saw an eight percent reduction. Now, two thousand and nineteen, goals and objectives for the police department. On February twelfth, I'll be meeting with the entire leadership team, will be finalizing our goals and objectives. And I have input coming in from line level folks all the way, we have a process of getting feedback from line level staff, all the way up to our leadership team retreat.
Uh thank you so much for coming. Have a great, have a great evening.